Welcome to the Wednesday, November 1st, 2017 Amherst Planning Board Meeting. So we do have a quorum. We have five members here, and I think we're expecting more. But the first thing on the agenda are minutes.
No minutes. I apologize. No minutes.
So we'll move right to the appearance. Public Arts Commission, introduction and discussion about the role of public art in public and private projects. So take it away, Yer.
Good evening, and thanks for giving me this opportunity. I'm Yerro Brody, and I'm a member of the Amherst Public Art Commission. For some time, the Art Commission has had as its charges, I think you may have seen our charge in your packet, we've been around for about 20 years, but some of the charges that are in our mission haven't gotten a lot of attention until recently. And one of the things that we are charged to do is make recommendations on public art in downtown to help beautify the downtown, advise various boards and committees that have a role in developing, planning downtown. We haven't really had much of a role until now. The reason it's come up now is because of, well, two things, really. One is that last spring, the town meeting passed a percent for art bylaw, which mandates that a certain amount of public art will be created downtown as capital projects are approved. The other thing is that we've been talking for some time with the Archipelago developers, Dave Williams and Kyle Wilson, about putting art in their projects. And we have found them to be agreeable to talk to. They're very art-friendly. But until recently, we haven't had a lot of leverage to encourage their actually coming through with putting art in their projects. And, but now that the town has voted by 71 percent to include public art in its own projects, that gives us more leverage to talk to private developers about they're doing something as well. We have talked to Dave and Kyle about art in the Kendrick Place project, and we have talked to them, to some extent, not as much with art in the project where the carrot shops were. What we want to do is get ahead of the curve on this. Those projects were well underway, and in fact, one totally completed before we had anything to say to these guys. And our mission is, and what we like to do, and it would be beneficial to the town, is if we get our foot in the door early on in the planning projects. And when we became aware that they were planning yet another project on Spring Street, we thought, okay, it's time that we got serious about this and talked to the planning board, or the town manager, or whomever we needed to talk to, to make sure that the Public Art Commission did have some role as these projects were talked about, before it became too late, before private developers were able to say, well, it's too late to put art, we don't have the money anymore to do that. So that's why we're here, or I'm here tonight. Renee Taveras, the Chair of the Committee, had hoped to be here with me, but personal matter kept him from coming tonight. So in a nutshell, that's why I'm here. It's basically an introductory meeting to let you know that we're here. We are more than willing to do what it takes to participate in, however it works for the town and the planning board. I drafted earlier, actually when John Musanti was still town manager, anticipating that there would be other private projects and opportunities for public art, a draft proposal of how to deal with public art with private developers, basically private art, but in the public space. So there wasn't any way, there weren't any protocols for doing that prior to this. And so we thought, as projects come along, the town should have some basis for talking to these developers. And if they are going to put public art, well, what's the role of, it's a private development, what's the role of the town in deciding, or placing, or approving some substantial piece of art in that project? As far as I know, there isn't any particular protocol for doing that. So I took a shot at drafting a proposal to deal with that. It's still basically in the draft stage. When Paul Bachmann became town manager, I forwarded a copy of that to him, and there hadn't been, I think, a project since he received that that warranted him actually even looking at it. But I think it's part and parcel now of what we should be doing. We should have a series of protocols or template for how we talk to developers when they're regarding art, when they are proposing major projects in our town. I think the vote in town meeting about public art shows that there's serious interest in this in the town, and that we should have a role in determining how that goes. That's why I'm here. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And we're just looking for ways to, you know, insinuate ourselves as the Art Commission into the planning process at the appropriate points.
Yeah. Are you suggesting that the developers should be responsible for funding and installing public art in their projects?
I think that that's something that can be discussed. Some towns have made it mandatory. Some towns have chosen not to do that for fear of scaring off developers, making it more expensive. Other towns have decided that they can create incentives for developers to add art in their projects by giving trade-offs on other things that the developers want done in a project. But unless it's on the table, it probably wouldn't even be discussed. So I'm not taking a position that they should do it, or that they shouldn't do it. It could be looked at as a project on a project-by-project basis, where the project is, whether it looks, it should be appropriate, if it's in a major central part of downtown where there's a lot of traffic, it might be more appropriate than if it's somewhere where it's not so visible. So I don't have a view on that. It should be mandatory, no. I think that we should be open-minded about it. And, but I think it's a topic of conversation when a developer comes with a proposal. It's a legitimate question, we think, to ask. Have you thought about putting some public art in this project? And if they haven't, well, what do you think about that? We were going to be talking with the Beacon Group on the North Amherst project as well, and they were very interested. But that project, the developer there, I mean, that's been delayed, although they're still interested if they go forward in doing some kind of public artwork there, even if they're artistic benches or bike racks or something that's not, you know, substantial. But just that it gets on the table and talked about.
Rob?
I'd be interested in a rough sketch of the proposal that you're drafting, because I think it sounds interesting. I wouldn't want to start creating something from scratch if it's already been started by the Art Commission. So as I recall, the percent-for-art initiative doesn't mandate that the art be created onsite, right? It just creates a fund for public art to be placed somewhere.
Well, it's, there are two parts to it. For the major capital projects, it strongly implies that the art will be onsite. For capital renovation and improvement projects, no. That, the half a percent that those projects generate would go into a public art fund that could be used for various public art purposes as determined by the Art Commission.
Right. So it seems like there's, there's an opportunity, I mean, that fund isn't really funded yet.
Right.
But, but an opportunity to ask a developer to provide a place for, for public art to be installed by the town, using those funds.
Absolutely. That, yes. There are various ways that art could be put at a project. And in fact, that's what we talked to Dave Williams about on the Kendrick Place, because that building is already up. And there was a place, as you know, in the early drawings and plans for that project, that showed a piece of public art in one of their brochures near the entrance to Kendrick Place, although it was never installed. And also, he has talked about turning that alleyway between Kendrick Place and Bertucci's, which he calls the muse, to use that for some kind of artistic purpose, although that hasn't gone anywhere yet either. So sure, there are various ways that it could be approached and handled.
So the, I'm sorry, did you have any?
Oh, yeah, I just had some questions. The mural at One Pleasant, is that, that's public art, but that's more preserving what was already there.
Right.
Correct. Were you a part of that, or?
Oh, we were involved in that discussion, but we weren't, sort of, it was after the fact. I think that was such an obvious case of destruction of a piece of existing art that, you probably know more about this than I do, that I think it was part of the contract for the, of the Cottis Street new building, that that be restored and replaced as part of the, as part of the project itself. But we weren't intimately involved in that discussion, although we talked to them about it after, after it hadn't been decided.
Just one short question. What is public art? Is that just art that is viewed from public areas?
Public art, basically, is art, that's, well, different people define it differently. I think a good broad definition is art that exists in the public space, on public land. So you could use it loosely to refer to any art, even on private property, that the public sees. But in fact, public art is art that's paid for by public funds. It's on, or is on the public right-of-way, or on public property.
You could even look at it as art that's not in sort of a traditional, or a museum, or, you know, gallery setting. So it's, you know, in a different kind of a context. But the, so the way that these programs exist in many places is through the discretionary. So and actually, the One East Pleasant is not a bad example, because, I mean, we were never part of that leverage. But certainly, the replacement of that public art was a critical piece for, you know, at least, you know, consensus that this project should move forward. So there was a compelling reason for them to act in good faith
Right.
in that particular circumstance. But whenever there's a discretionary use, special permit in the case of, you know, in the zoning bylaw, then that's the place where these kinds of discussions can happen. And nothing really prevents that discussion from happening now. In other words, there's all kinds of offers that come already in the special permit process. But certainly, offering for some kind of a public art or contribution to an art fund could be considered by whatever the special permit granting authority is. I think it's probably, I don't know why it hasn't come up, you know, enough here, partly because there hasn't been all of that much construction.
Right. And there hasn't been much of a precedent for it either in Amherst, to think about it that way.
So if, you know, we, because I was part of the group that helped, you know, one of the, part of the advisory group on the percent-for-art, which I find to be enlightening just because we all had different experiences. But if you've lived in a community that has a robust percent-for-art, or public art program, like Cambridge, in my case Miami, and also Albuquerque, so these are all three communities that have a public art, a percent-for-art program, there is a sort of an expectation that there will be these sort of delightful moments. And one, when you come to, you know, Amherst, which doesn't have that, is, you know, very clearly missing. So even at the huge enterprise of University of Massachusetts, you know, there's very little evidence of, you know, sort of public art. I mean, there's few select pieces, but not as nearly as a robust program than if we're, there's some sort of a compelling, you know, and that, it's obviously outside of our jurisdiction. Even Amherst College does not have a, you know, sort of obviously robust public art.
No. Right. They have various statues as part of their campus, but.
And then, while we're at it, extend our, go all the way to Hampshire College, and, you know, ditto. But I think that, you know, maybe the percent-for-art for municipal buildings will compel the private developers, or we can look at the zoning bylaw, or, you know, whatever, but.
Yeah. It would seem to me that if we're going to try to do this at a serious level, there needs to be something in the statute that encourages it, or suggests it, or mandates it, or something, that so the developers will think about it when they're preparing projects, as opposed to coming in after the fact and saying, wouldn't it be nice if you could, or if you do this, we'll trade off this requirement. I think, short of a kind of hint in the, in the zoning bylaw or somewhere, that this is a desirable effect, or a desirable goal, I don't think much of anything can happen in terms of us seriously encouraging this. The goodwill of an individual developer may provide something interesting. But if we want to get to the point where there's going to be a fair amount of public art developed and maintained, because maintenance clearly is an issue, too, then we have to, it seems to me, if not, I don't think requiring it is the right way to go, but incentivizing it in some specific way in the, in the bylaws.
So there may be an opportunity to have a conversation about this with a specific developer soon, because Archipelago, the developers of Kendrick Place are going to be required to come back to you and to the Select Board with a plan for the East Pleasant Street side of their building. That was one of the conditions of the approval that the planning board gave. And they had some ideas about what they wanted to do with that strip in terms of where they wanted landscaping, where they were proposing trees. And they did show in an early sketch that there was a place for potentially some kind of public art. So when they come back with their plan, that would be an opportunity. And even before that, perhaps, I could, you know, remind them that they had discussed that, or at least mentioned it early on. So that might be a sort of an opening to a conversation there.
That would be a good idea, if we could do that. Yes.
This was just meant to be an introduction, yeah? Not a particular?
Right. Well, we are trying to feel our way. How do we move forward with this? We do have this very draft proposal that no one has, you know, vetted. It's just basically based on what we've learned from our public art experience with the percent-for-art program about the role the town could have with a private developer, to, to make sure that art is maintained. For example, if it is, if the private developer installs some art and so on. But this proposal would need to be, you know, looked over. I didn't bring copies of it tonight, or prepare to present it tonight, because I thought it was premature, that this was just a preliminary conversation to determine, you know, how you thought about this idea of involving the Art Commission at an early stage in building projects in town, or what you would like to see, who would receive such a proposal to approve it. Is this a Select Board item, or a town manager item, or a planning board item, if there were such a protocol established? This is new territory for us.
And so part of it is just the, sort of the information loop. Like, certain bodies are notified for certain reasons when projects are in the pipeline. Like, the Agriculture Commission is supposed to be notified if there are projects involving agriculture that may be becoming, you know, before this board, or between the zoning Board of Appeals. And then obviously, we have the Design Review Board. And so there's other bodies that are notified in advance of projects, or during the permitting process. But to me, it would seem like a good idea if either you all, by paying attention, or we all, or, you know, you all, by simply notifying that there are projects here, and maybe this conversation could be, you know, it's not right now part of the regulated process, but it could certainly happen on a, you know, on a whatever ad hoc basis that they've had a conversation with, you know, your commission, and they understand, you know, that here's what they're contributing to the community.
Well, we think that that would be a reasonable and really beneficial step to take, just to notify the Art Commission when projects are coming, coming down the road, as to whether we should have a role, where we have an opinion on it, whether we think that this is something that we should be looking at or not.
But you've hit the big ones. So you've hit the Beacon Communities Project, Aspen, Aspen Heights, or whatever the current name.
I don't think they've spoken with Aspen Heights. Have you?
No.
The developer?
Yeah, that might be too far.
We haven't actually spoken with Beacon either. I have an email from a woman in charge of their, I guess, in charge of project design. But we did speak with Molly.
Molly Lockwood?
Yes, Molly Lockwood, a couple of times about it. And she tried to get us together with them. But then, something stalled the project, and it hasn't happened yet. So a question I have is, I mean, if we have a draft proposal for protocols, who should look at, who should be looking at that to approve it, or to make suggestions on amending it, or whatever?
It depends on whether you're intending it to be a general bylaw, or a zoning bylaw, or a policy, or what kind of thing it's supposed to be. If it's a zoning bylaw, then the planning board would need to review it and possibly promote it. If it's a general bylaw, the Select Board usually does that. And if it's a policy, I think the Select Board would do that as well. But the planning board would certainly be interested in, I'm taking, maybe taking on too much for myself, but here, I think they would be interested in having an opportunity to review it, no matter what board had to carry it forward.
Yeah. It was drafted as a policy, not as a bylaw. It just is guidelines, basically, for the town when, if a developer comes and wants to put art at a project, rather than the town saying, sure, go ahead, or not, here are some things to think about, and that include maintenance, placement, you know, community involvement, perhaps, if it's in a really public space. It sort of addresses issues like that, not meant as a bylaw.
Chris?
So perhaps the planning board would like an opportunity to review
Yeah, yeah.
that policy statement. And perhaps the Design Review Board would also be a good body to bring it to for review?
I'm just looking at the zoning bylaw quickly. And it seems to me that in Section 10, non-conform, oh, no, sorry, Section 10, Special Permit Granting Authority, there's this list of special findings, specific findings required.
Yeah.
And it could well be that some mention of public art might be included in one of the things that the Permit Granting Authority would make a finding about, whether it was something that should be, should happen, or that it would be some kind of incentive. But that might be a place to put it in terms of where it might have some visibility to a potential developer. And of course, to anybody who's in the position of granting permission to do, to build the building.
So I might also suggest that infiltrating the various, not that infiltrating the various boards is also, you know, because we have three architects on this board, but I don't think we have any, you know, full-time artists in, well, you were in theater.
Yes. I would, I would say that I was.
Full-time visual artists, but you were performing artist to my left. But there was a vacancy on the, and then not that, you know, in other words, you can help the cause by also, or your group can help the cause by joining this board, getting your name onto, you know, the various boards. The Design Review Board, I don't know if you all have a, you know, a seat there?
There are a couple of visual artists on the board.
On the Design Review Board?
Well, it sounds like a good first step is to get you copies of the draft policy, get your input on that, and to see what you think. I mean, we are open to suggestions, of course, and amendments, and criticism, just trying to get, get something that works for the, for the town.
Do you have a staff person that you work with?
No.
Doing it all yourselves?
Yeah.
We move to get some FD of somebody.
Pardon?
Well, try to, try to get some, somebody's, like, I don't even know, you have to ask the town manager, yeah?
Yeah. What normally happens in response to the request to be notified, we have a transmittal that we send out when we get applications. And we usually send them to the staff person of whatever board or committee we think might be interested. And then that person brings it to that board or committee. Unfortunately, the link to the materials is through an internal program. It's called Munis. And you wouldn't have access to Munis to follow the link. So, but I could send, I could add Renee to the list, or add you to the list. And then when you get this thing, you could call me, and maybe I could email something to you.
Would the planning department be the obvious liaison, or would it be just the town manager's office, or would it be?
Well, the planning department is certainly able and willing to communicate information. So I can do that. I can put you on, I can put one of you on the list to be notified.
Sure.
Thank you. Do you have some sense of when this draft proposal might be ready for our eyes?
This month.
Good.
I mean, we have a, we have a meeting this month, and we'll go over it once more with the, the Art Commission, and then be happy to send it out, probably through you, Chris?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to suggest, because we have the two Johns here, I think you're here for the same reason, yeah? Discussion on?
Housing market study.
On the housing market study? Would you guys, would everybody be amenable if we just go to that discussion? So, everyone? So we're going to go to the discussion, so we're going to go to 5B Housing Market Study, continue review and discussion about Chapter Six recommendations. And the way that we've been working.
[inaudible]
Speak into the mic. Okay. So we've skipped, skipped to 5B Housing Market Study, because we recognize that you, although you might be interested in some of the other things, that you're probably most interested in that. And so we have been kind of following a guideline that Michael Burtwhistle has created. So if you're okay, if we can continue that way.
Well, we certainly can do that. It's, it's my understanding that Mr. Fox is interested in going slightly away from the outline that we had been, we had been working on just simply the recommendations in Section Six, I believe it is. And that Mr. Fox was interested in discussing some aspects of Section Five. And perhaps that might be a good way to begin.
Mr. Fox?
Well, thank you, John Fox, Precinct 10. I don't have any prepared remarks, but I saw, and I'd encourage you to look at the Housing Market Study. But I didn't see in your outline for But I didn't see in your outline for considering it what I think is, and I hope you will agree, a very important part of the study, which is if we build, who will come? And I think that's really crucial, because any incentives through the planning process for more housing, densification, more high-rise buildings, I think must take into account who will occupy those buildings and what will be the impact of those occupants, to the extent that you can predict it. And the Housing Market Study, to the extent you want to accept their recommendations, strongly argue through their data, and the data needs to be updated. I think the data is even more persuasive today than it was when they did the study, that essentially, any new housing of any significance in Amherst is going to be occupied primarily by undergraduate, UMass undergraduates. They make the case and provide a lot of data to show that there are so many thousands of UMass students around the perimeter who would love to be downtown. And so I gave you this quote, let me just read the quote, there are many of them, but it says on page 5-3. Ultimately, a sufficient supply of student-focused housing, either in dormitories or in the private real estate market, must first be developed in Amherst before the town will be able to attract and/or support any significant increase in non-student households within the community. So I think it's just very important that as you think about additional housing, which I think is important to think about, that you really give serious thought to if this housing is developed, is approved, if any zoning changes are made that would encourage additional housing, that is their finding that it will not attract a significant number of non-student households until there's much more available housing, either on campus or off campus. So it's a tricky thing, but you'll never, in effect, I don't think that you can ever exhaust that demand for students to live in Amherst, because it's so attractive to live in Amherst. I think it's great to live in Amherst, and I think that we know that students would really like to live here. So I wanted that very much to be a part of your consideration as you think about whether you want to change any zoning laws to encourage any additional housing, what will be the outcome in terms of the population, and whether that's desirable. It may be that people on the Planning Board feel that's just fine, that if we could fill the town with several thousand more students, others, I think, would object to it, thinking that that really will discourage what we hope the town to be. And let me just end by that, that Gretchen and I live downtown. We live on Fearing Street. And actually, it's a wonderful place to live, notwithstanding all the news about students coming down in the nighttime. We like the proximity to the university, and I think it would be very attractive if there were housing that is on campus. I think that if we had a real multi-use project that had a combination of some housing, but a good deal of retail, that that would be very attractive. We've really lost with all the cottage, all the things, all, what, 15 or 20 different small retail shops that One East Pleasant has replaced. And you think about what remains. It's very hard to keep a family-owned business in town, and we want to do that. I think that's one of the great attractions for those of us who live in town, is to come to all those places, beginning with Bruegers and going up through Henley's and the rest. So I want, I just encourage you to think about what would happen if there is additional zoning that encourages more buildings, like One East Pleasant, that tries to attract more, more housing? And if the housing is primarily for undergraduate students, what that will do on the, what you, I think, want are incentives for other people to want to live downtown. So it's not easy, but that was my goal, to get you to really look at that Chapter 5 and what they're saying, which is if you build under the circumstances, which I don't think have changed at all, I think they're more likely than even then, that the population that will likely fill much of the, of any additional housing will be UMass undergraduates, and whether that's all right or not, you'll have to decide. But certainly, you would want to bring that to the attention of the town meeting or whoever is involved, if you come with a presentation. So that's what I wanted.
One of the, I was going to call on Greg, if that's okay?
Yeah, so I just, you know, wanted to agree with Mr. Fox's comments that certainly additional housing would likely be occupied to some extent by students, and the passage you refer to in the Housing Market Study is definitely noted. I would point out that rather than saying that the demand from students for new housing is infinite, which I would, I would tend to disagree with, I think that was maybe one of your statements.
I can't quite hear you, the demand.
You stated something along the lines of that there's an infinite demand from the student market for housing, and I would say that that demand is finite. And the Housing Market Study passage that you referenced actually goes on to state some specific numbers. And of course, I wouldn't say they're the exact numbers, but they say, at the time the Housing Market Study was done, that there were 639 student-oriented beds under construction, which are now mostly or entirely complete, and they forecasted, based on increased UMass enrollment, an additional need for 1,361 student beds. So that is an indication of the finite nature of the student demand. I'm sure those numbers aren't entirely accurate, but they did provide somewhat of a ballpark for how much more housing we might need to provide before we reach an equilibrium with the student and the non-student occupants.
Well, I'll be happy to get back to you, but I think that the demand is much greater than that. The number of student, the number of university students outside, living outside of Amherst, not in student dorms, not in student housing, is considerably larger than what you've indicated, considerably greater. So I'd be happy to, you know, to see how to amplify that. I mean, so that, because I think that's evident in the study. And so I'd be, I'd be happy to respond to that.
Turn it back to the microphone. Yeah, there are a lot of, not conflicting statements in the report, but statements that complicate each other. It seems to me that one of the interesting issues is that if we would build the number of units that Mr. Stossman suggested is referenced in the, in the report, I can't help but think that if those are attractive units and that the, those students who now live in Hadley and Sunderland and the other surrounding communities would find it much more attractive to live in those, and that the demand would not significantly decrease, but it would just shift somehow, that we would still have the same kind of demand for student housing that we, that we were attempting to answer. It just will be slightly different people, and we'll still be in more or less the same place. That's not to say we don't need to do something about it, but I think that's an issue that we need to think about as well.
I don't have any facts to back me up, but I think there is some, I don't know what the stasis is as to, because there always will be a desire of undergraduates to not live on campus. I mean, there are becoming 21-year-olds and 22-year-olds, and they don't want to, no matter how attractive the on-campus residents is, might be, there just is that effort or desire to be an adult, especially in a nice town like Amherst, where you, in fact, can live in, you know, live in town and, you know, maybe someday walk to a grocery store. So I think, I think there's a balance point somewhere. So there, you know, the UMass, I don't, again, I'm speaking completely without facts, but at some point, there was, at one point, there was such a demand on UMass housing that they relaxed the rule that freshmen and sophomores, I'm sorry, first year and second year students had to live on campus, and they relaxed it to only first-year students.
Yes.
And so that contributed to the, you know, the 5,000 possible new tenants in off-campus housing. But, and at the same time, those students living off-campus are a huge economic driver of, we all know, our neighbors are, you know, who rent to, you know, to students. So, and it's nice. It activates the, the right balance activates the neighborhoods. But I also completely agree with you that it seems like the, you know, the new buildings that get built in the really desirable areas aren't being rented by people like me. I would, you know, someday love to live above a store in a nice town like Amherst and, you know, go downstairs and go to Henley's Bakery and, but I'll never, they'll never, right now, those projects aren't being built, you know, for people, like, for people who want to get rid of their single-family houses and, you know, live in an apartment or a condo. So I think that, to me, that's one of the highest priorities, is to really ensure that, and I think we agree on this, that housing get to a point where it's really attractive to the whole range, intergenerational.
Yes.
And the businesses that are associated with that housing are also targeted to that whole range, so not just, you know, bars and pizza shops, but...
Yeah, and I quite agree with you that the question is the balance. You know, what is, what is a balance? And there's no exact formula. But what, what I see, and I really will respond to Greg's indication, I think that the, the demand for living in town by these thousands of students who don't live in town is so great, and I think the Housing Market Study indicates that, that there's no way easily to solve that. And yet, we really want to attract middle-aged and older people in retirement, all of that, that, to come to town. So how do you, how do you anticipate that in your planning? And I, you know, I think it's a challenge, and I hope you will look at that carefully.
I was going to go to Maria, then Christine, if that's okay?
I was going to agree, that word balance is really critical. We were just at a, what is that called, a design charrette meeting today, and we were talking about, we would probably, next step, still very big-picture visionary, but think about scale of the downtown, and, you know, is it four to five stories? And think about other precedent towns to compare to and see how they have balanced living, working, and, you know, recreational, in particular in college towns even, not only college towns, but look at those as well, and just see how they are balancing the student community with the current community. Because it's not that student community is bad, it's just we want to find that right mix. And I think at one of the last Planning Board meetings, we were talking about possibly looking into making supplemental apartments or sort of small cottage developments a little easier to do. I mean, it's not, it's not going to have the numbers, but at least it's going to create something where there's a little more community building with students and perhaps with younger families moving to the area. So we're looking at a lot of different options, because you're right, you know, it's always going to be an issue, but we're trying to find various ways to come at it, from, you know, small scale, maybe dividing up lots so that there's more higher densities in the areas, not necessarily downtown, but adjacent to downtown. So we're trying to find that.
I quite agree with you to look at other towns. Hanover, for example, where Dartmouth is, bought up the student housing and with their trust, and replaced entirely, and forced more students to live on the campus. It's a smaller campus, of course. Lexington, Kentucky, where the chancellor came from, relaxed the housing requirements, and I'm told that something like 90% of Lexington, Kentucky now, at least around the campus, is student occupied. Westwood, out where I know where UCLA is, it used to be a place where lots of people lived and around, and I'm told that it too has declined greatly because students have increasingly occupied the area downtown and west. And so I think it is very important to look at other places, what have they done? It's a tough problem when you have a huge university. So, thank you very much. You had another question I'm happy to answer.
I just, I think there are a lot of students living off-campus. I don't think they, even for the most part, would all move downtown, even if there was housing that they could rent, mostly because of price. I have a nephew who rents, he's a student at UMass, and he rents in Pelham, and he lives in Pelham only because it's cheap. So I still think, you know, all kids can't go live in, like, Olympia Place because it's expensive, and it's a nice place. So I, unfortunately, I do think that's one control, that's one reason why they move further off. I know, I'm on UTAC for economic development, and there's so much discussion about trying to get more businesses in town.
Yes.
Attracting the millennials and the next generation that are coming out of, say, like, the computer science department and engineering, and like the, what we have, what is the insurance company? The Mass?
Mass Mutual.
Thank you, Mass Mutual. I'm like, Mass Mutual, they want more, you know, businesses like that. So there's still young people, which, you know, they're slightly older than students, but I know what you're saying, how you want to get more of a mix. And at the first forum we had, I just kept hearing over and over again how people wanted, like, senior housing or condos. And you can't just tell developers, like, what, and come and build, but I think the hope is, we're starting with the easy, low-hanging fruit, and we have apartments where some students are living in there. But by putting more people downtown, that's going to create the market that might create the need to have businesses. You know, a lot of the businesses, like where One East Pleasant replaced that motel that had businesses, but a lot of those businesses admitted that they were suffering and lowering sales and ready to retire, but that doesn't mean we don't want new ones. So hopefully, this will start to, you get more, more businesses, and then developers come and go, oh, like, this is a place where other people would want to live, and hopefully we will get maybe older people. I don't know if families necessarily are going to move downtown, but...
So there's just two quick comments. Now, I hope I wasn't interpreted as meaning that 100% of the thousands of people, there are obviously some people who won't, but, but the study says that the desire is so great for so many of them that they would like to live downtown. I think it's a real challenge. If you're having largely undergraduate students in town, for small businesses to thrive, what we, I think we know, and increasingly it's true, the students purchase things online. They don't even go to, I mean, they do go to malls, but increasingly, and so do grown-ups, so that's the great, that's, that is the challenge. But students, more than anybody, I mean, they've grown up buying online. So I think the greatest hope, and I quite agree that, that gathering, maybe 100 people, there was a huge emphasis on keeping Amherst as a college town, as a place where there would be small businesses that would appeal to people. And it seems to me that we're the ones who, people who are older, middle-aged, returning UMass graduates, Amherst College graduates, are the ones who are most likely to want to walk into town, buy things, sit down at Henley's, go to Bruegers and the rest. So it is your challenge. But my, my point was to ask you to really look seriously at that question, who will occupy the buildings and what will be the outcomes as you anticipate them?
Yep.
One que, and it's a little bit to Greg, sorry, because I know you're on UTAC Housing. Is there much discussion about what UMass, I mean, because we can't make UMass build dorms, but are there discussions like that that happen, so that we're privy to any of their plans?
Well, I think the most significant development along those lines was the university issuing its request for information from developers recently for what could be a very large project or number of projects, and I think in the neighborhood of 1,200 residential beds and hundreds of thousands of square feet of various types of academic and accessory facilities. So that's an indication that the university is interested in at least hearing about the potential for some of those things. But I think the point that really resonates with me, whenever we talk about this balance between the students being on campus and off, is to Steve's point about how much of a rite of passage it is for students who reach a certain point in their academic career to want to live off-campus, and we're not going to get away from that reality. And I think that, in my understanding, is the university already houses a significantly higher percentage of students on campus than other universities around the country. So I don't necessarily see that shifting significantly. On a different note, Christine, I think you were saying that we can't make developers provide things like condos and senior housing, which might be preferable because of the way they address the concern that Mr. Fox raised about students occupying new housing. But I was actually just looking at some examples of zoning code around the coun- just looking at some examples of zoning code around the country. And something that is done, but Amherst doesn't do, is to regulate condominiums differently than apartments. And so, we've seen a lot of development of rental housing in town, which is a good thing. But I think there is more concern attached with rental housing than owner-occupied housing when it comes to students. And so, perhaps, and one of the reasons that developers, I think, provide that type of housing is because there's a lower cost to construct when you don't have to do things like provide a certain type of firewall between units and separately meter all the utilities. So, you know, if, for instance, we were to provide or to allow a greater density of housing that does meet those requirements and is suitable for being condominiums, then perhaps the developers would build them.
Should we keep moving? Or, I'm sorry?
I have a stupid question. UMass, in terms of their student population, do they have like free rein? Or is there a feedback in terms of what is reasonable in terms of, you know, the, the stress it puts on the town? I mean, I think their popul, their student population is increasing moderately.
Very slightly.
Yeah.
And mostly with out-of-state students.
Okay.
If, so...
I mean, that's the fire hose that we're looking at, is UMass. And it just seems like, you know, that's one way to kind of like, kind of put a moratorium on, on growth of student population. The percentages are always gonna be the same, like...
Yeah. So, UMass has a desire to be selective. So, in other words, in an effort to, I, you know, I'm not speaking for, if anyone from UMass is watching, I'm not speaking for... Their desire is to be selective. So, they're not gonna open up the floodgates and admit every, you know, every student. Actually, they've been, become much more selective in the last, you know, 10 years. But, yeah, there is a desire, you know, to increase slightly. And so, that would be, you know, another question is if these public-private projects, you know, are built, would that simply, you know, give UMass the opportunity to expand and everything stays the same? So, the demand on, you know, off-campus housing remains the same or higher because that new housing that's built is simply the expanded, you know, the expanded number? I, I really don't have the, I'm not close to the, the people with those answers.
But I think that is an important, what you raised, the, the, the university, for the first time, and we had been talking to Stan Rosenberg about this for a long time, to encourage the university to look at public-private project in which it's a real complex. And they're talking about including hotels, along with student housing, other commercial uses, lots of having a variety of things. And placing it on, in the University Drive or even where Gateway was, and you can imagine if this is a real complex in which student, undergraduate students are simply a, you know, a, a segment of it, but not the dominant segment of, of the housing there, that the university will manage that. I mean, they'll look after that. And I think that is, would be a great thing in Gateway if they really did create a complex and with restaurants there where you drove up. And, and it was a real gateway, because I think would be an exciting way for people to, to look at UMass for the first time, really have an attractive gateway. And here it is, a complex, there's some students, but they're not gonna be throwing their stuff all over the lawn. It'll be very well-maintained. So, I am encouraged by the prospect of, it's, it's gonna be long-term before they really get going on it. But in the long-term, I think it's a very, very encouraging sign. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say in response to Jack's and Mr. Jimsek's comments that one of the reasons for establishing the TAC was to talk about these issues so that the town would have a better sense of what UMass's plans were and that we would be able to respond or that they would be able to help us respond. So, I think those are conversations that are going on among the subcommittees at TAC and probably with the steering committee as well. And...
You mean UTAC?
Yeah, sorry, UTAC. UTAC, that's right. But I also wanted to say that the town has very little control over UMass and its decision-making process. And they, they have what they call sovereign immunity, so we can't really tell them what to do. We can tell them how what they do affects us, but other than that, we don't really have that much, we, we don't really have any control over them.
But I can say that the pushback from the town very much rides on the university's decisions in terms of their selectivity and, and their plans for growth. And so, that, you know, I've heard the, people at the Tippy Top, you know, say that, that the places where things have gone wrong, such as, you know, big parties and so forth, have been a, been a sign that, you know, maybe unchecked growth and assuming that the town will absorb it is not a great idea. John, or, yeah, go ahead. John the Second.
Oh, thank you.
John Hornic, Precinct 7. As you all know, I was here about a month ago. And one of the reasons for returning was I got such a nice reception that I couldn't pass up the opportunity to come back and to reinforce some things that, that you're doing. First, last time I talked about numbers of families, the fewer families that we have in Amherst than we had 15 years ago roughly. I wanted just to let you know that that wasn't a made-up number. There actually is a basis for believing that. And so, I have given you a kind of one-page handout created for the Housing Forum that gives you the resources or the source of those estimates. Listening to Mr. Brody before, I was thinking the public art that we need is a statue showing families with young children saying goodbye to Amherst. So, whatever we think about having more students, which has been the discussion thus far in what the university is doing, I do think we have a serious problem. I've communicated about this with both Phoebe Harris, Phoebe Hazard and Mike Morris. And I really don't think we want to see them having to preside over the deconstruction of the Amherst schools because there simply aren't enough families and children in town, and those numbers continue to decrease. I mean, they have other problems to manage, but this, I think, is the biggest problem frankly they have to manage. So, I know in looking at your agenda today, you were looking at recommendations from the Comprehensive Housing Market Study. A number of those recommendations really do have to do with adding housing to Amherst, including affordable housing for families with children. I can't emphasize enough how important I think that agenda item is. And I'm very glad that you're looking at it. There were a range of recommendations. I know you're not gonna be able to get to all of them. So, if I were prioritizing, and this obviously is up to you, that's what I would put at the top of the list. I'll say one other thing, and I don't know whether this is a clue to a direction, but as you all probably know, families are a protected class under both federal and state law. That means that if a family comes to a landlord, they cannot discriminate. They cannot say to a family, no, you can't occupy an apartment in this building. That is a violation of, I said, both federal and state law. The flip side for me is that clearly in Amherst, we haven't done a very good job of protecting the interests of families. That's what the data yell at us loud and clear. And what I'm wondering, again, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a zoning expert, is there a way to turn that around? And is there a way to say, can we discriminate in favor of families because they are a protected class? Is there a way to say, as there is new development, that somehow they come first? I don't know the answer to that. But, boy, if you could find a way to do that, I think not only myself, but many other people in town, probably including Mr. Fox, would be very pleased to see that as an outcome.
Yes, I would.
As I said, I, I really don't have the expertise to advise you. I will rely on you. The last thing that I will say is, as I have in the past, if you find a path for doing this, I will support you when it comes to town meeting or any other forum in whatever you propose. Thank you.
Rob?
So, I was at the Housing Forum last week. It was really good. There were a number of us there. One of the things that, that I heard that, that struck a chord with me that I thought was worth pursuing by the planning board and ultimately town meeting, the notion of supplemental dwelling units. One of the people there lived in town, said she lived in town and wanted to do a supplemental dwelling. And I don't remember whether she wasn't allowed or she had to go through a special permit process. And it was, it was about converting a carriage house or a garage or something. So, it would be a detached unit. And, and she thought that was onerous. So, one idea that, that we, my breakout group talked about was making, if, if a detached supplemental dwelling unit could be allowed by ri, it could be affordable, if it were, if it were de-restricted affordable for some period of time, 10, 20 years, could that be a by-right use instead of a special permit use? And could it exceed the 800-square-foot maximum? In that way, if that were, if that were true, if something like that could happen, some of the big houses in, in the neighborhoods around downtown where people might be looking to move out to, to downsize, but, but maybe don't want to downsize to 800 square feet, maybe they want to downsize to 1,000 square feet, could, could we allow them to build a, and they don't want to be, they, they don't want to rent their house out and they live right next, right with whoever they're renting to. Could we allow them to build a detached unit way in the backyard or on the side yard or something that's 1,000 square feet? Make it affordable for a family. That, that provides an avenue for a family to move in to the downtown area. A place for someone to retire or downsize but stay in the downtown provides a, an affordable unit for some period of time and isn't gonna be filled by a student, at least for some period of time. Could that happen?
But it would be a rental. That's my fir, and so, anyone could live there. So, it could be student housing.
Not if it's affordable.
And, okay, and affordable, a family usually needs a lot more square footage. And I thought the, I mean, I would just hate that the only best we could do is be offering rental. Like, I mean, that's a part of it, but I think we want homes to be owned by families would be the first ideal goal.
Sure.
How you do that, I don't, I mean, I live in the Farview neighborhood, and there's a lot of ranches and capes and stuff, which would be considered more affordable than a lot of other areas. And two of them are for sale right now for $500,000. Now, there are families that can afford that, not as many, obviously. But I think another important aspect to look at, which is not in our jurisdiction, is that for someone to come and pay that much for a starter home, they're really banking on that the school system is strong. They're thinking of it as they're gonna use it, and that's the rationalization they would use to buy that home. I know that was part of how we rationalized buying our home for our three kids. So, I, I think it's, it's about keeping a nice, livable downtown. I think there's so many options, but I get nervous on just thinking about the supplemental dwelling because I think a lot of people would use that just to, as a rental, to supplement their own income, especially as they're aging, and not necessarily for the benefit of families.
So, we've already got restrictions in our existing regulations around supplemental apartments that say with the detached unit in particular, that one or the other has to be owner-occupied. So, that protection is already in place. And I actually don't see any harm, but only benefit in Rob's idea about perhaps modifying the way that we regulate those detached supplemental units, much along the same lines as we regulate duplexes where we allow some more leeway when half of the duplex is affordable. We could do the same thing with the affordable, de-restricted supplemental unit. I think, we've talked about this in the past, either at this body or another, the notion of affordable detached units. And one of the sticking points may be the eligibility of those units for the SHI or the local initiative program. So, recognition in the state size, basically, of the affordable unit. But I think it's, it's certainly worth considering. I also wanted to raise another point about the affordability in the housing. So, you know, John, this comes from the trust which you and I are both on, and our focus is affordable housing. And the topic you're raising is how we've lost families in Amherst over this time period. But the piece that I'm not sure about is the overlap between the two areas of interest. That is, how many of these families that we no longer have in town or that have aged out of that age bracket were actually in the low-income categories that we look to serve in our work? I assume some of them. I assume not all of them, but I don't know what the percentage is. And so, we can seek to increase the number of families in Amherst, and we can seek to increase the amount of affordable housing. But I don't think there's a perfect sync between those two goals.
I, I have a couple of responses to what you've been saying. First, I have to say that the quality of the data that we have, and we did try to look at this, in terms of the number of low-income families that are no longer in Amherst, simply would not provide us with a very reliable answer. The dispersion or standard deviation or whatever you want, term you want to use, is too great because of the limited sample size in the American Community Survey, which is the primary source of data about economic levels. So, I can't answer that question. On the other hand, I can say that when we're looking at the schools, we're not just talking about affordable housing for families. We're talking about housing for families with children. The school obviously do have a number of low-income, children from low-income families, but they also have had children who aren't from low-income families. I think we need both. We need to bring families back to Amherst one way or another. While I appreciate Mr. Crowner's suggestion, and I think we should follow through. I had similar conversation with Mr. Morris on these kinds of things. There are various things you can point to that might bring us another five or 10 families each year. For example, you have people aging, literally aging out of their homes and moving someplace else, and then a family coming in and buying it. Those numbers are really small. 667 families, over 1,000 school-age children are very big numbers. So, we also need to be thinking big. And that's why I pointed to the Comprehensive Housing Market Study recommendations around multifamily housing. We need to do something that goes beyond getting us half a dozen or a dozen new families into Amherst a year. The numbers that we no longer have are very large, and that's why I want to put that on your radar screen.
So, we, I was just gonna say, anecdotally, we had half as many trick-or-treaters last night as we did.
We had one.
10 years, 10 years ago, so that's evidence then.
I hear 94-year-old across the street from me, and he was telling me how hundreds used to come through. We had three last night, so...
Yeah, yeah.
But, so I lived in Arlington, Massachusetts in the 90s, and there was a big wave in demand for housing then. And I don't know what the zoning and what happened, but they started splitting two-family, three-family, and even single-family homes into condos, which did cause, there was lots of angst and worry in that. But it created opportunities for families to have ownership and not be just renting, not, you know, so, because when you buy, that anchors you more into a community, and you are more likely to stay there and raise your children. Renting keeps you a little bit transient. So, has that ever been talked about here? I mean, I hear very little condo stuff that happens here in Amherst.
I think the last substantive thing that was done was in the 80s when we actually made it much more difficult. made it much more difficult to create condos. So that was a reaction, I think, to some of the apartment complexes being condofied. So we actually have some restrictions on that happening.
So condos are also subject, somebody's explained to them, and I explained to me this recently, that because condos are always subject to lawsuits for construction defects, that it's really not desirable for developers, so given the choice of rentals, like the archipelago projects versus condos, it's almost always desirable for the, if there's a demand there, for the developers to go with rental, because they avoid, you know, sort of the construction defect problem that a number of individual unit owners would face. And so there's a statute of limitations. So once they get beyond that, so really the possible market is rentals until the statute of limitations is over, and then condoize, you know, after that. But that might be one reason for, other than the zoning restrictions. But there are new condos on Prospects. Those are condos, right? So those are probably the only condos that have been built in a while.
The ones on West Street are relatively new.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's Marsh House.
Marsh House, so the, yeah. So Prospect and Marsh House are the downtown ones.
And the new ones on Prospect, some of that was in an existing house?
Yes.
It's not just building.
The Hastings House, right?
Is that where it is?
I think it's the Hastings House, yep. So, and, you know, so there also is the theory in planning that developing a tax base without kids is also good. You know, in other words, to, because then you can increase the tax base and avoid the greatest burden on, you know, the town budget, which is the schools. So, in other words, that's why the, you know, Olympia Place Project was attractive to some, is because it's, you know, a big property tax generator with no burden on the school system.
What you say is absolutely true.
Yeah.
This is a value proposition.
Yeah, yeah.
I personally value having families in this town. And even though my own family no longer lives here, my kids grew up here.
Yeah.
I think it was a great place. And I guess I could say as a retired person, well, you know, whatever happens, happens. It doesn't affect me. That's really not the way that I feel. I do think we have to address the cost to the town, the tax burden of whatever happens. But the truth is, we have a very high per pupil cost in the Amherst schools today. I remember from presentations at Town Meeting, I think the schools can probably absorb a couple more kids without a great deal of added cost.
And I don't know where the studies were, it's either the PVPC or the various studies that were done in Amherst, that in some ways were also being hurt by the desire to move to cities. So the desire to move to cities has been a, you know, safer cities, people want to live in, they want to stay in Brooklyn instead of moving to the country, or move back to Boston or whatever. And certainly that is, has to have some effect on the appeal of people with families to move to Amherst. And I don't know the data on North Hampton, which is much more urban-like. You know, it's like a little, it's more Cambridgeshire. You know, it's denser.
Yeah, when you're denser.
Yeah, yeah. So whether, because I know so many people that, you know, come to work at UMass and they have to live in North Hampton. It's just, that's where the action is.
Yeah, North Hampton has had some decline in the number of families with children, but it's far, far less, I should say, than Amherst. The comparison that I offer you in that one-page piece is actually Hampshire County without Amherst.
Yeah.
So, the rate in the rest of the county is much less. People do point to the fact that there have been population changes in Massachusetts and nationally, that's true. But nonetheless, Amherst sticks out.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's happening regionally. I mean, Turner's Falls High School is desperate for numbers right now, and Greenfield, too. So everywhere is shrinking. So part of it is you need to look attractive to young families, because when they're looking, it's almost competitive now. There's so few, less families, so you want to attract them and have the best. It's not necessarily, so we would have to also sell it on rationalizing the cost because obviously a house in Amherst costs a lot more than it does in Montague.
And you mentioned earlier the fact that if Amherst wants to see economic development, there has to be a place that businesses feel they can move and their employees can live. And that not only includes older single adults, but also young families or even potentially older families. And the housing often has to be there before the economic development will take place. Again, I heard a presentation at the Mass Housing Partnership by, I believe it was Tim Reardon, which I could find, that demonstrates this. So again, if we want to see economic development in the community, we need to have housing for the staff or employees of those businesses.
So I wonder if we should consider expanding the RG zone and allowing more residential uses in the RG zone. So townhouses, for instance, are, require a special permit in the RG zone. What if we doubled the size of the RG zone and allowed townhouses by right?
Only in that part of the RG zone. That's not in my deck.
Would you include condos in that?
I would expect that townhouses are more likely to be owner-occupied than apartments would be, for instance. So, a townhouse is a three-story building at max.
Yeah.
It's not a five-story building. And it, and the condo exists from ground to ceiling. It's not like, you know, you can't have a double-decker. So, it's limited.
I think the important thing to know is that condo is not a physical form. It's a form of ownership. And so, they're not necessarily mutually exclusive, an apartment and a condo. But what I was referring to earlier was how if, you know, we require a base, that what the building code requires of an apartment, there's certain things that would need to happen for it to be a condo, which wouldn't necessarily be required of a rental. So if we were to put somehow into the zoning, and again, we can look at other communities and how they do this, some requirements that things be built to the specification such that a condo is likely requiring, for instance, separate metering of utilities, additional firewalls, architects can speak to this more than I can. We could incentivize that type of housing. And I think that that's something that's definitely worth looking into, whether it's along the lines of what Rob was describing, where we promote townhouses that are configured to be owner-occupied or individually owned as condos in the RG or elsewhere. I think it's worth exploring.
So the condos are not necess, well, you know more than I do, but, so condos, too, are subject to investment property, where people buy them and then rent them to?
Right. So a good example of that is the townhouses in North Amherst, which are entirely condos.
Yeah.
Happened to be one of, I would say, the more problematic developments in town as far as behavior and party issues. But, yeah, you're not going to get away from that. Fact that, of course, a student's parents could purchase the property for them, and they live in it through the course of their career at UMass. I do think that I agree with what Christine said, that ownership of property, along with it, comes more kind of anchoring to the property and in the community. And even if it were students that lived in the condo while they were at UMass, there's a certain, you know, level of literally ownership that comes along with it and responsibility, I think. So, I don't see any downsides to it.
But the, I mean, I think that the thing worth exploring, because we already have a distinction, say duplexes owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied. So owner-occupied, townhouses by right, non-owner-occupied, not by right?
I think the owner-occupied distinction on the surface is getting more to the point because it seems to be requiring that. I think it was problematic in the conversations that we had about how you determine whether something is owner-occupied or not. And I think what we're potentially talking about is promoting a certain physical form to come about in the town. And if we can tie that physical form to the type of occupancy we'd like to see, I think it might be more effective than trying to mandate it without teeth. So.
And the example that I gave earlier about supplemental dwelling units does not, A, it does not mean that I'm suggesting the family should live in the supplemental dwelling unit. And B, it doesn't mean that the families wouldn't own the main building and rent the supplemental dwelling to the previous owner of the main building. I mean, there's, so obviously, that is not going to solve the problem. But it doesn't mean we shouldn't do it.
We haven't had any action on the affordable duplex, have we, which is a by right?
Yeah.
We haven't.
Habitats project.
Habitat, okay.
Yeah, I think two of them. Yeah.
So, it may move the needle a little bit. Every little bit helps.
Okay?
Yeah.
Should we keep moving?
Thank you for hearing.
Thank you, John.
Steve, if I could. So do we plan to keep putting this on the agenda as a recurring item? I'd just kind of like to capture maybe some of the momentum we have here. And one thing might be to, you know, have the zoning subcommittee work on some of the ideas that we've talked about tonight, because, you know, I think we've done a lot of work there on a number of issues over the years. But I feel like there's more maybe consensus about following through on some of these goals in the Housing Market Study and Housing Master Plan to thoughtfully provide density in town. So maybe we need to have more conversation at the Planning Board level before we do that. But I'd like to choose kind of a next action step here, especially in keeping with Michael's recommendations.
I think it would be great if we maybe did this one more time and then turned the zoning subcommittee loose on some detail work on how we could implement some of the issues. Seems to me that we're really talking about needing a lot of different kinds of housing. We want to have student housing. We want to have housing that is affordable. We want to have housing for families. And then that can be rental or ownership. And we want to have downtown urban opportunities for empty nesters or people who just choose to live in that, in that kind of format. So there's a lot of different housing options that we want to have, all of them. And to some extent, providing some of them would loosen up the demand for others, because there's an existing housing stock. To what extent that happens, I have no idea. But it seems to me that if we focus entirely on creating one type of housing of those several that I mentioned, we're boxing ourselves in too much. I would hope that whatever we can come up with would increase every kind of housing, or at least many kinds of housing. Because as we've pointed out a couple of times tonight, this is an economic issue as well as a housing issue. The more housing we have in town, the stronger the economy gets to be in town. So I think that's where I hope we can go.
Awesome. Yeah, sure.
Just one thought. I think it's been, it's been raised, how have other college towns dealt with this? And I would hope you would consider hiring a consultant who has expertise in looking at the way college towns have found a really good balance. And what zoning they've used, what different approaches they've taken, that it would be really useful to have an expert come before you and answer your questions, and tell you about the range of things that have been done to try to achieve what we're talking about. The right kind of mix that would attract and that people can afford of different levels. So I encourage you to look into that, and I think it might be really beneficial.
Thank you.
I have another dumb question, but, is there a way that the town can incentivize family owners versus others in terms of credits, you know, for the property tax and things like that? Because, you know, I just bought a car today, and I bought a certain kind of car because I wanted it to be fuel-efficient and green. It's a, I got a-
What'd you get?
Plug-in.
Oh, you've got a electric car?
Plug-in Prius, yeah. I love it. It's like, it's not in my driveway yet, but maybe tomorrow. But anyway, I just, I'm wondering, because, you know, I'm listening to all this, and it's like, if I sell my house, like, I might give up, you know, a certain sum of money for, you know, what I would sell the house for, for a family. Because I live in a house that is right next to Crocker Farm, and it needs a family in there. And, I mean, but personally, I think that there's that end of things that, you know, you might want to consider, because you could sell to, you know, a housing developer, you know, catering to property, you know, management partnership and have students in there. And it's easy to do that, you know. But is the town, I would think, be able to leverage, you know, sales to some extent, if you can reward family, family, ownership by families?
So I have a, I have a suggestion for your situation. Maybe not your situation exactly, but something like yours. I'm a member of the Amherst Community Land Trust. It's an organization that holds land for the purpose of providing affordable housing. One way that the town could help incentivize what you're suggesting is provide a subsidy to help a family buy that house and keep it, keep it, keep the ground in trust with the Community Land Trust, so that it continues to be available forever to families and people that meet a certain income level. So it would require subsidy from the town through the Immiscible Housing Trust or, you know, contributions, things like that.
And I don't know enough about how the Amherst College, does Amherst College provide any kind of a?
Faculty housing?
Well, I know that they provide rental housing, but do they provide any kind of incentive for faculty to?
To buy the house, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do.
But it seems like the other way is through the big employers. So like, UMass has nothing, to my knowledge. But lots of, I mean, that's something used by a lot of big employers to, you know, if they see the value of having their employees live in a particular area. Especially, it's not so much used in a desirable place like Amherst. It's more used in a place that might be seen as, you know, losing population at even a greater rate than Amherst is. I think it's an interesting idea. I don't, yeah?
So I think we also need to consider, though, one of the reasons people buy houses is in order to get into a market where the house keeps going up in value. So some of these subsidies that you put on, or some of the restrictions that you put on with relation to affordable housing, keep the amount that the owner can recoup when he sells the home at a lower level. So it depends on why you're buying the house. If you're buying it just to be able to live in it, or if you're buying it to actually have it become part of your nest egg as you grow older.
That's actually a major issue with affordable housing around the country, is that it's structured, as Chris just described, so it remains affordable. But it also means that those people living in it and putting sweat equity in it can't capture the-
Yeah, exactly.
The increase in value.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Should we keep going, or do you want to? Permit?
I think we can move on.
Okay. I think that's been, so, thank you so much. You're welcome to stay. So we're going to go back to number three, which is planning and zoning, the zoning subcommittee report.
The only thing I have is, also at the forum last week, it was brought to my attention and to several other people's attention, that there's going to be another effort to bring back inclusionary zoning as applying to all special permit projects or all projects or something. The, this person or group is going to approach either the Planning Board or the zoning subcommittee in an effort to get us to sign on and develop a proposal. And if we don't want to, then it will be brought by petition to Springtown Meeting. So that's coming. that's coming. That's it?
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Do we decide whether we want to at this point, or do we wait for you guys to meet with him some more?
He has not met with us. He said that he was going to at some point.
Oh, I see, I see.
And I don't know whether he's going to come to the planning board or to the ZFC.
Okay.
I assumed to the planning board.
All right.
Any other? Be downtown town center, community forum, planning for fall forum? Anyone?
We had a meeting this afternoon, and perhaps one of the three zoning subcommittee members might want to report on it.
Sure. So, we're still planning to hold the forum, and the date and time noted, December 6th at 7:00. We did also plan to hold another forum at the end of January, Wednesday, January 31st, and as far as the structure of this upcoming forum, still a work in progress, but the main things we decided to focus on so far were to take the maps that were created at the last forum, which identified what each group thought the downtown was, and narrow, carve out that area which is unanimous, that all groups said that is definitely the downtown, and focus on that for the time being, and say what could happen in that area. And then subsequent exercise, we, the members of the steering group, are collecting examples from other towns and cities of improvements that those areas have made that incorporate live, work, play elements, and present them visually for the group to rank. We'll have the clickers the town meeting uses available, and so there'll be an exercise where participants will identify those aspects that they like and those that they don't like about these different areas, and then there will be at least one, if not two more, exercises, and the goal would be to identify how we might fit those types of improvements into Amherst, with the overall structure being that the second forum would be about visioning, and then the third forum in January would be action steps. So, there's still a lot of work to be done, and the group plans to meet a few more times before the forum in December.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Thank you. Public comment on other town meeting reconsider recommendations, I saw on item 4A, reconsider recommendations on Article 6, recreational marijuana retailer, and Article 7, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments?
So, we just wanted to clarify what our motion is going to be under Article 6, to make sure that, so you would, the board had previously voted to recommend Article 6, but you sort of left it up to the zoning subcommittee and the moderator to come up with what our actual motion would be to achieve the intent that we wanted with Article 6. And so, we have those motions for Article 6 in front of you. I guess we just want to make sure that this is what you intended to recommend to town meeting. So, in either case, we are, there's, the text of Article 6 in the warrant includes a prohibition against retail marijuana uses in mixed-use buildings. We are going to move to delete that condition, which is 3E1D, and then also amend, if necessary, the total number of recreational marijuana retailers to whatever the select board's Article 4 comes up with. And then if Article 4 fails, then we would also just delete that condition from our motion.
Okay. Consensus, yeah.
And then for Article 7, we, the board made no recommendation, but the select board is going to actually make one of two recommendations, depending on what happens with Article 6. If Article 6 fails, they're going to recommend the moratorium. If Article 6 passes, they're going to not recommend the moratorium. And I don't intend to make a recommendation or make a motion that we change our recommendation to town meeting, but in the interest of transparency and so that you have all the information available, this is what the select board is going to recommend, and if somebody wanted to suggest that we change ours, now would be the time to do it, I guess.
Comments?
We're good?
May I mention something? The town meeting starts on Monday, and the general feeling in town hall is that it's going to go rather quickly, and especially that we're going to get to the marijuana articles early, and so I think that the planning board will probably want to be there on Monday night.
Continuing, should we go on? Continuing discussion, recommendations at town meeting, Article 15, petition, general bylaw, net zero energy town buildings. So, were we all here? Was everybody here the last time we talked about this?
I was here.
You were here, but you didn't say anything.
No, I don't usually.
Yeah, everybody's here. Oh, Greg wasn't here. So, we decided not to make any recommendation and so that we could sit on it, and then discuss it again tonight, to see if we want to make any recommendation at all. So, I believe that they're, hi, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to make one comment, which is that the select board decided the other night that they would move to refer the article back to themselves, so that they would have an opportunity to really work on it, because they thought that, in concept, the proposal is very good, but they thought that the mechanics of it were needing extra work, and they also thought that it should be a resolution or a policy rather than a bylaw. So, I'm just passing that on to you.
And if I made it, were the petitioners there?
Yes.
At the select board meeting?
I think so, yeah.
And were they agreeable to any of that?
I don't necessarily think that. One of the petitioners was at a warrant review meeting with us, so we don't know what the other petitioner was experiencing at the select board meeting.
So, one thing they have appeared to do since the last time we, since we heard this, was to, they say that they've removed the Jones Library project from the list of projects, so, and I'm not sure whether or not their mechanics for doing that actually do that, but that was their intent. And that was in part from the thinking that the Jones Library is pretty far down the pike already, through conceptual design, you know, et cetera. So, there's been a decision that if there isn't a library project, it will be an addition, basically, in the back of the library. So, whether or not that's even net zero possible, it doesn't seem, you know, reasonable to constrain that project. So, that would only leave the known projects of the DPW, the fire station, one or two elementary schools, and maybe a garage, yeah?
So, just to give an update on that, DIF SAC, the DPW Fire Station Advisory Committee, they met last week, and they voted to not support-
Interesting.
The article.
So, coincidentally, this may have come in all your mailboxes yesterday, Architect Magazine.
Oh.
Well, if you're, and they had a, it's actually a very good article about resiliency, and they have a whole section in here.
About what?
I'm sorry, it's, they have a, it's about resiliency, so basically, yeah. And so, they have a section here on net zero, and the pluses and minuses of net zero. So, Massachusetts is actually kind of a leader with net zero buildings, with 11 buildings, which is a very small number, but on the other hand, it's a very nascent, or, you know, it's very, like, there were, you know, it's still early, the ability to do net zero buildings was still early. And so, also coincidentally, I happened to be at a meeting this weekend with the architect for the Williams College Building, which was intended to be a living building challenge building, which means net zero energy and then net zero water use. And so, that was a building that did not make net zero in its first try, and so they're still trying. So, Chris said they had met it, met it, and they haven't met it yet, but they are doing a lot of things, namely, changing user behavior to try to meet net zero in this recent cycle. So, there is one, in this particular article, there is one net zero elementary school, which I think is in Maryland, but most of the building types are lower usage, like office buildings. So, it's-
So, oh, I'm sorry. One of the things that came up, I think, I forget when, oh, the warrant review, was that, or motion review, was that there was a suggestion made that the planning board might want to take a position, not only on the article, but then also on the select board's motion to refer, that they are intending to put forth.
And I would, I would, I would like to support the motion to refer. I would oppose a recommendation against the article, but I would support a motion to refer.
I also agree with that.
Steve, I have a question on net zero. In terms of the spectrum of the LEEDs system, is that, is it something different?
It's different. So, the thing about net zero basically means that over a course of a year, did you produce as much energy as you used?
It's all energy related.
There can be no combustion.
Okay.
So, can, nothing can be through combustion, all has to be, basically, through electric. So, LEED considers energy use, but then LEED also has accommodations for transportation, you know, are you on a bus route, do you have bike racks, you know, things like that. So, in a way, net, people like net zero because it's yes or no, you either met it or you didn't meet it. But people don't like net zero because it can cause bad billing decisions, whereas LEED seems to, has more, because it has more of a, it's more complicated, so therefore you can make good billing decisions and not be penalized for that.
Who certifies LEED buildings?
U.S. Green Building Council.
LEED is a little more holistic. It looks at water, energy, air quality, site-specific reasons, and net zero is a little, not confining, but it's sort of, you know, it's putting blinders on, it's saying it's all about energy. And so, the article that you passed around, or Chris passed around, that you sent, was really interesting, because looking at individual buildings seems a little short-sighted. It does seem like you need to think more about a community scale, like how are different buildings in the town using energy, and where are those big energy hogs, and let's look at the bigger picture. So, I agree with Rob's sense that, you know, maybe they can look at a different way to reach the same idea, instead of demanding individual buildings, you know, for the sake of saying that they're using zero energy.
I think, you know, sustain, it's more about sustainability, and energy is just one piece-
Exactly.
Right.
So, why put all your eggs in one basket, sort of thing?
Yeah, yeah.
And you literally could be in a situation where you're cutting down trees to save the forest, you're cutting down trees to get light onto the PV array, and then you're losing the benefit of the trees.
And renaming the street after the trees you cut down.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right.
So, there's a motion and a second. We were discussing the motion, really, so.
I don't think there's neither of those things.
You moved to, oh, I'm sorry, that wasn't a motion, then somebody said I-
I read that as a motion in a second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I move that the planning board recommend the select board's motion to refer Article 15, and that we also, somebody makes a statement explaining, you know, giving some planning context.
A second.
No.
So, the planning, the select board also looked at the next article, is it 15, 16? And they tied both of those into saying, because the next one is more, more general, but it's tied to sustainability and green, if you look at the, so, we could also do that and bundle the two together to be referred.
I would accept that as a, whatever.
Go, Chris.
Except I believe that the select board is going to recommend 16, even though they're tying their discussion of the two together. I'm pretty sure that they're recommending 16. Let me just check in my, whatever this is called, script. Yes, select board recommends Article 16, because it's more of a resolution than it is a law, a regulation. So, they tied them together in terms of their discussion, but they're recommending 16.
So, you know, so once again, these are really admirable ideas, and they're much more powerful. If, say, it was a state mandate, and there are a lot of state mandates and federal mandates regarding things like this, but just, but I'm agreeing with the motion to refer. So, are we ready to vote on that?
Yeah, we're just voting on the zero energy bylaw, not the-
That's 15.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous?
Thank you.
Preparation for town meeting presentations?
So, we had a meeting today, Mr. Stutzman, Mr. Kravitz, who's the Economic Development Director, a member of the select board, and myself, to talk about a presentation for all of the marijuana articles. And Ms. Kruger is going to give a statement, sort of framing all of the marijuana articles, why are we doing this, why are we here, what's the timeline, et cetera, how it relates to state law. Then, Mr. Kravitz is going to give a brief, about five-minute overview of, again, you know, how does this fit into state law, and what's the timing of things, and he's going to list all five of the marijuana-related articles. And then, Mr. Stutzman is going to give the presentation on Article 6. Is that right? No.
Well, we have a few articles between.
Right, there's Article 4 and 5 before that, which is tax and-
Public consumption.
Public consumption. And then, Mr. Stutzman.
Oh, and the cap.
That's right. Yes, 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 and the cap. So, that's as far as we got. And Ms. Chow is giving the presentation on the temporary moratorium, and Mr. Crowner is giving the presentation on the Table 3 footnotes, and Mr. Stutzman is giving the presentation on parking garage.
Awesome.
Chris, what, so, our schedule next week, Monday, we should reserve for town meeting?
Monday and Wednesday.
And Wednesday.
So, because of my day job, I will be there Monday, but Wednesday, I have something else I have to do at 6:00 to 8:00, so as soon as I'll be there is 8:00, but I don't have a, you know, a speaking role.
Mr. Birdwhistle is going to give all the motions.
Yeah. Good. Old business. Signing the decisions?
No decisions to be signed.
We did be, anything for C? Old business topics done?
No.
New business, transportation advisory, crosswalk design standards?
I suggest that Ms. Gray Mullen might give that presentation, because she is working on the crosswalk guidelines with the Department of Public Works.
So, I'll try to keep this brief. You have the document, it was in our packet. It includes a letter from the previous chair, Mr. Rosnoy, talking about the process that this draft, crosswalk design standards, are going to go through, which is on December 5th at 7:00 PM, the TAC, the Transportation Advisory Committee, will have a, all their meetings are public, but an official public meeting to hear any comments or feedback on the standards that were developed. To give you a little history, this was tasked to the newly formed TAC from previous town managers and other officials, obviously because a lot of the crosswalks that are downtown are in tough shape, and they came from different design standards. Chris, I may not have this, I know some were from 2006, but I think there was some previous to that, too.
Downtown streetscape, or the standards.
So, they've been around a while, and they're deteriorating, and part of the complication with them is they're made from many materials. There's concrete, there's granite, and there's cobble, and of course asphalt's in there. So, where we live with water freezing- So where we live with water freezing over and over again, that deteriorates the concrete and creates breaking, and they just are not lasting. So before going and starting to do new ones, the TAC wanted to come up with some drafts. So if you read through the document, it can, the beginning's pretty straightforward, but then it talks about town-wide, and it talks about just downtown, and then other areas that are identified is a, maybe a high speed or extra care needs to be taken with pedestrians. So just to note that on the last page, there's a summary table, and for some people it might be easier to look at that first and then read the document, that's all I want to say. So why it came to you all is because this is sort of the first thing coming out of the TAC, and they're trying to set a standard of dissemination to lots of committees and make sure that it really got about and that everybody knows that they can comment. So of course, as individuals, you can still comment, you can send a comment, and there's a link on the TAC website, and here I'm mostly, I can answer any questions that anyone has about this document, and other than that, I'm not sure what Planning Board wants to do.
This will eventually be presented to the Select Board for the Select Board's approval.
That's true.
And the Select Board might ask if the Planning Board had any comments.
That's true, just to call, it's the Select Board that actually adopts it because they are the official keepers of the roadways for Amherst.
Questions, comments?
I think it's admirable, I have one question. Why are there two different patterns? Why is the continental pattern and the ladder pattern both being used?
Okay, so usually, the ladder would be the one that we would mostly recommend, but we, if you notice, the ladder is made from the continental and a standard, and for two reasons for the standard. One, sometimes the roads are under construction, and you don't want to go through the effort and the paint, to paint so much. Another one is that we have some other that would technically be non-standard for us, design standard crosswalks, like the Amherst College ones, that are kind of dark, they're brick, and they have granite anchoring them in. They did, in the past, have thermoplastic lines, or they're painted, so what we would require there is it only would be the standard lines, because you wouldn't paint on top of the brick walkways. Does that make sense? So like technically, at the Amherst College crosswalks, you're only putting standard lines down, you're painting them on. So we left it flexible for different situations.
Under optional enhancements, is it just location by location, you kind of decide whether you add like the little lighting flashing balloons, or is it?
Exactly, so if you look on the last page, under the notes, it says under number one, DPW engineering study is required to determine if the criteria or warrants are satisfied for the installation of crosswalks for a particular location, level of marking, and, you know, following MUTCD and MAS DOT design guidelines. So it's, you just don't put them, they're optional enhancements, but there would have to be an engineering study to determine which ones would be best or allowable.
Thank you. Just information, yes?
It's information, if you wanted to make a recommendation that the Select Board should accept these, that would be appropriate, but you don't have to, and you could take them home and think about it and make a recommendation next time you meet, which will be on the 15th, because that's still before December 5th, which is the big forum.
Exactly.
I like that I do. Everybody, yeah? Downtown Parking Working Group nominate a Planning Board. And this is to replace Richard.
Yes, the member would be appointed, I believe, by the Select Board, but you would nominate the person, and I would pass the name on to the Select Board.
And at the end, let's see. So you're in, but you're on.
I was previously on it.
Okay.
I have not been on it, but I'm willing to go back on it.
Okay, so we have one volunteer. Everybody's staring at their shoes.
And don't forget, the TAC will also need a member, too, so.
Yeah, yeah. Is there, well, someone want to move to make Christine Gray Mullen our nominee, subject to approval by the Select Board?
So move.
Oh, tie.
Tie goes to the runner.
A second.
Oh, come on! That was great. It's a normal hurdy or something, plan that well.
Well, we'll say Michael made the motion.
Great, a second. Good tiebreaking.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Abstentions? So that's unanimous, I think. So topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior?
No.
Form A, ANR?
We have the Form A. We do. This Form A is related to the property on University Drive that you saw a presentation about a few weeks ago. It has to do with the proposal by Mr. Barry Roberts to develop the property into a restaurant on the north half and housing on the southern half, and he is going to divide the property in order to do that, to have it be two separate projects.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Hearing no objections? Is that it for A? Upcoming ZBA?
I am not aware of any upcoming CBAs, other than the big one that you know about.
Upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB?
We have two. One is at 8 Sunset Avenue, it's the Institute for Training and Development, and they're proposing to put in a ramp. It's the big, beautiful yellow house at the corner of Sunset and North Hampton Road, so they're putting in a handicap ramp there. And the other site plan review is, I just wrote it down, Crotty Hall. Crotty Hall is coming in with a request to put in a six-foot-high chain-link fence along the southern property line. I think they have a lot of cut-throughs from UMass, from the campus onto Phillips Street, so they would like to put in a fence there to cut down on the number of cutting through. So you'll be seeing those two on the 15th of November.
Thank you. Committee reports, PVPC?
Christine and I went to that, what was the name of that, oh, knowledge corridor kind of transportation theme, and it was great. It was in Union Station, great speakers, great speakers, and they're really trying to get, you know, East-West rail in and get more north-south trips, north of Springfield, I think there's only one per day. It was very, very interesting. And then one thing that I got out of it was that we're actually, you know, our roads and bridges are kind of declining, and there's not money going into the system because it's all based on gasoline, we're using less gasoline, the tax has never gone up, and that's why they're talking about putting tolls, you know, on our interstate and different roads because they got, they got to fund it somehow. I think in Connecticut, the governor has proposed something controversial, but he's leaving in a few months, so he doesn't, you know, he was great, by the way, Malloy?
He was awesome.
Oh, yeah, he was, he was so good.
He was like a political Stephen Colbert.
Yeah, yeah.
He wants you to move to Connecticut and vote for him.
Well, he's not, I mean, but he was so witty. It was just, it was just great.
Interesting.
And then the previous meeting, something with the marijuana law that I am a little confused about, but it seems like it's, it's odd in that what the definition of the moratorium is, it's not, it's not a normal, but the thing, the deadlines are so close together or something, and it's just, it's, it's kind of odd, and the planner at PVPC was just kind of complaining about that, and I guess we're kind of, what we're doing with the warrants are in, you know, to react to that, that situation where the, where the two dates are so close together. Chris?
So.
Yeah.
I wanted to, may I say something about our meeting with Town Council yesterday? He praised Amherst for taking steps to do the right thing by this marijuana law, the fact that we're proposing a zoning amendment, and, you know, if that fails, we also have the temporary moratorium in our back pocket. He thought that was a really good plan, and he said that many cities and towns around the state aren't doing anything except putting in a moratorium, they're not really thinking about it at all, and he felt that our zoning bylaw would probably not need to change a lot based on what he knows about what is coming out of the Cannabis Control Commission. So anyway, I felt that that was a pretty good response to Amherst's efforts, because it did take a lot of effort on the part of, especially the zoning subcommittee, to put it together.
Is that it?
That's it, thanks.
Thank you, that's cool. CPAC, Parry's not here, Ag Commission, still isn't that? Design Review Board?
No recent meeting.
Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust?
I think we're pretty up to date after the conversation earlier.
Then Subcommittee, UTAC, Downtown Parking Working Group, and then Transportation Advisory Committee, so do we have to do that again?
Transportation Advisory Committee actually is a Select Board appointment, and they are encouraged to choose from a number of entities and people, which doesn't specifically include the Planning Board. So I've reached out to the town manager and asked him if he would like me to seek a nominee from the Planning Board, and he hasn't gotten back to me about that, so they may have some other ideas about what they want to do with that position.
Report of the Chair. It was a big week last week for, so you're, the bike ride, so the bike ride ended up being two of us, so Marie and I, we did a tour, because Jack and Rob both couldn't make it at the last minute.
I almost didn't make it during the ride.
We went to, we went to Hampshire, drove to Hampshire College, looked around the Kern Center, which is actually fascinating, and then went to see a faculty exhibit, and then it got dark, and we came home. And then your Planning Board trivia bee team, any questions about that? We, we got three point, we got three right out of 15.
I've got more than that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Whatever. Way over 30%, right?
No, 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 no.
Five.
Five, right.
Five.
Yeah, but the winning team.
Like nine?
Nine, yeah.
Oh, that's not bad.
Yeah, we were okay. The questions are getting more and more obscure, so I think they need a new question writer, actually, because it's all Star Trekkie, Homer Simpson-y.
Some of us have.
Obscure dinosaur-y. But, yeah, anyway, it was fun. So that's the report of the Chair. Report of staff?
Is everyone planning to come to the town meeting next week, or are there people who won't be able to be there? Everyone's planning to come? Good. Thank you.
And that's it.